We might as well start.
Scott.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yep.
Stan.
Yes ma'am.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yeah.
Rob.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look over the unit? I need approval for the first one for...
For the first one, March 4th?
Yeah.
And I'll make the second for March 4th one.
Scott.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Okay, discussion of approval of the financial report.
Right, you gotta do this.
Well, you gotta do the second one.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, don't screw it up.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I did screw that, okay. For the next... Next one, who's making that move? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Steve.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Joyce.
Yep.
Stan.
Yes.
Okay, now, got your approval of the financial report tomorrow?
You wanna handle the annual appropriation and all that stuff now, or you wanna talk about that? Or you wanna do that when we talk about it?
Well, let's do the financial report first.
Okay, let's end the line with a discussion because I've been going through everything. As far as I can tell, everything looks like it should. I see no issues with any of the accounts. Hopefully it comes before we're out right now with everything.
Everybody had a change of record? No discussion and any approval on the financial report?
I'll make a motion.
Second that.
Joyce.
Yep.
Steve.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bill.
Yeah. Okay, this one.
Okay, our special guest is Jill Warland from Exxeter and Warland Insurance. She's got some really good news for us.
Oh!
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I just made that up.
Liar, liar, paying so hard for it.
Just like Joyce said, oh, no, this time of year, oh. You guys don't have enough paper there, so get you a couple more sheets there.
Yeah, your papers cost a lot to money. You give split service, that's something.
You ain't keep sir, you don't get that slipper, John. Again, thanks for letting me come out tonight. Uh, Joe Warland of Exxeter, Warland. It is time for the rebuild. Uh, I don't know how in-depth you guys wanna get with this. I know...
Did you say in-depth or in-depth?
In-depth. Oh! That was your voice. It's your voice. You got a permit for that? I'll do it again. I wanna sign that one, okay? Uh, really, you know, if we wanna go through line by line, I'd be more than happy to. The only changes that we had from last year to this year was the, um, if you look on the... They'll say statement of values on the top. Two more there, Joyce. Keep going. That's all. Should be all, pretty much all the way to the back.
Oh, okay. There we go.
There you go. Statement of value for the vehicles, flip back. Two or three there, Joyce.
No, I got the wrong statement of values.
Page seventy-two.
One more.
We got this down in the back.
I can see through the paper. Statement of values. Uh, on the vehicle schedule, uh, item number three, the 2011 Ford Escape.
Yes.
Uh, the police car. Number four, the, uh, 2014 Ford F-250 pickup truck. Those are the two, two new vehicles, um, that were, were added. The next page is the miscellaneous property statement of values. This is for the inland marine, which is your, your contents throughout the, throughout the village. And as well as here, uh, number thirteen, the 2013, uh, Boss V Plow. As well as the 2000 New Holland Batco. And I don't think, we went through that, John. I don't think there's really anything else major, was there? On, on that stuff there. The next page, again, is just a statement of values for the EDP or the computer coverage. Sixteen thousand, um, throughout the village, police fire, um, water, what have you. As well as the two thousand for the, or the twenty-five hundred for the, um, Dell computer for the state. And that's mandated by the state there. And then on the next two pages, the last two pages, I should say, um, that's just all the buildings. And then the difference between last year's statement of values for the, the blanket compared to this year was thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollar difference. Inflation.
Inflation.
Inflation on it. Yes. Yep. So, but looking, you know, looking from last year to this year, adding the, um, two vehicles plus the, um, two... The Batco plus the V Plow, um, additional thirteen hundred and eighty-two dollars from last year to this year.
Now, do we have, actually flood insurance is up too. We don't have, there would be a separate entity. We don't have nothing on flood rate?
Not on flood.
Okay.
Not on flood. You know, backup sewer and drains, you know, if you would have, um, trouble in any of the buildings, did you have coverage for that? But actual flood, earthquake, no. Still the three million dollars across the board, the general liability for, you know, the village, the park, police department, fire department. So, so that, that stuff has not changed. And I don't think it has been much changed throughout, throughout the village. I know I got a call, um, and I appreciate it. Anytime you're doing what we call a special event, like the, um, polar bear jump, comment on that, on those things, you know. On that one there, we asked for certain items. Those items came back. By looking at it, there was no extra charge on that. The liability protected, yes. So, you know, if you, someone wants to do a hog roast in, in the, in the park, give me a call. Say, hey, this is what it is. These are the dates. Uh, we wanna serve alcohol banned, blah, blah, blah. You know, something like that, there will be an extra charge. You know, anytime alcohol's involved, there's a, there's an extra charge. But no, um, we get it through.
Yeah, we're not allowed.
Not allowed to, not allowed. So...
State.
But like I said, you know, anytime, you know, something like that does come up, you know, I'd rather know about it beforehand than, than after.
After the fact.
Yes, after the fact, so. Any questions or concerns?
Can I ask a question?
We must do today.
Yes.
Well, okay, so this is the park committee and me thinking of things. So, if we would have a ban out there and we would have alcohol, but let's say the fire department sponsors the alcohol that comes out there, does the village have to, um, get the extra insurance charge on it?
Yeah.
It would be, yes, yeah. Yep. And, and again, any fundraiser or anything of that nature, you know, definitely let me know. I think we looked a couple times ago, um, RC Racing?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, um, I think there were two or three other different way out things that we wanna look at to see, you know, see what we can do, so. But no, we appreciate, you know, doing the loss control on. And somebody will, in the next probably two, three, once, once the weather gets nice, somebody will get ahold of you from the loss control, come down and you can walk them through again. So, just to prevent something from happening. You know, have recommendations on, you know, hey, you know, let's look at this, this, this. So, just to prevent something from, from happening, so.
What were the differences in the bringing from last year and this year?
Thirteen hundred and eighty-two dollars.
How much?
Thirteen eighty-two.
Thirteen eighty-two.
And that's then the, the two vehicles, going from the two thousand, um...
Truck and tractor.
Yeah, you know, the, the truck was huge with it, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, go from the two thousand two police car to the two thousand eleven cruiser.
Yeah.
I love it.
That was a good year to have it because it's for paid for itself this year.
Yeah.
And how many miles did you put on it this, this winter, John?
Uh, we had it in August and it's got thirty-seven hundred miles on it.
You know?
And usually it takes probably a year before it goes on.
I just kept going around its circles. I watched it.
Going down Joyce's alley, wasn't it?
Come out and get me.
Okay.
Probably cruise.
Bill's in there.
Do you wanna walk home with a check or?
That's what he paid for.
Yeah, that's why he came early.
Look at that. Due date, four one, fourteen.
How do you go get a late fee?
That's not April Fool's either. They have also in there, Gary, if, um, if the check is not cut tonight, there is a commit letter in there. They know that villages have meeting once, once a month. If it won't be cut till next month, uh, just need a copy or need that letter signed saying the meeting is... Was it, um...
First Thursday and May.
May the sixth.
May the sixth.
Yeah, and, um, then all, all we would do is just a, um, a motion that you're gonna redo for another year. That.
Is there a grace period? Like if we don't pay the money?
April first. Actually, April second.
We can meet the mail April second. Hang mail tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Let's do that.
And then... Did you get the, the...
Maybe he needs to stop by the month though.
Back of yours.
Yep, she got one.
What, the letter commitment?
No, I would need... And this is in there too. You know, the stability of the, you know, the, the program, um, two thou, or two thousand twelve to thirteen, you paid twenty-two seven fifty-one, twenty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. Thirteen to fourteen, twenty-two thousand five forty-one, and then this year, twenty-three thousand nine twenty-three. So, it's been real. And then this year was the, was the three, three major purchases. Okay. All right, any other questions or concerns? You guys got my number? My number is on the, on the front.
I got your number earlier.
No, I need her.
You need her?
Yeah, I need her.
All righty, well, I appreciate you, um, letting me go on first and we appreciate the business. Like I said, if, um, anything else comes up, please let us know.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Good rest of April Fool's Day.
See you, Bill.
See you, Tom.
I'm just gonna manage to take a look.
Okay.
Gary, do you want me to do my stuff now or for...
I'm gonna get down here to park. I won't keep it on, it'll go.
That's fine.
Oh, good. Okay, Scott, finance budget in order?
Okay, I guess, you wanna talk about this appropriation thing now?
If you want to. You're pounding me, you're... I got it down here. No, I don't want to.
Okay, then I won't talk about it then, just wait.
Okay. So, you have anything else to talk about other than that one thing that's in your craw there?
No, I think we're, Angela's doing a good job, not wasting all our money. And John doing a good job considering all the extra costs we had, and I think overall, we're doing pretty good, so.
Okay, police, Brandon?
All right, uh, biggest thing is I've taken this past month and getting automated to all the things that are happening or not happening, uh, should have happened and haven't been happening. Uh, the biggest thing is policy. Uh, this is what I've been working on for the past month.
Holy shit.
About ninety percent done. Um, I did not try to reinvent the wheel. This was taken from Tiffin. Um, I had a meeting with Chief Stevens, who I worked under in Republic, and very helpful, um, gave me a copy of their policy. I was able to kinda change some things to make it fit the village, um, take some things out that didn't really have anything to do with us. Sergeant Broches has been more than helpful, um, in everything in the police department. Putting the reports together, making sure the reports are sent to the state as we have to do each month. Those things are huge. She's, I, I would be lost. I would be completely lost. I'm not gonna say I'm not lost now, but I would be completely lost if I didn't have her, so. She has been great. Uh, we have sent out, or got letters ready to go, to be sent out to the previous employees to have any equipment or things that belong to the village or the police department to be returned. Although there were no records of what they had or were issued, we're gonna go on the honor system and hope that if they do have anything that's ours, it'll be given back to us. Um, those letters will be certified and sent out, uh, hopefully tomorrow. I'm in the process now of working with Senate County Sheriff's Office to get a records management system. We do have one in the aircar computer, come for somebody to use when you're trying to do it in the car. Senate County tried to have it put over here about a year ago. For some reason, they were met with resistance. It's no longer gonna be the case. We're gonna have it put on the, the office computer so that we have a way of keeping track of what's been going on and be able to search names, be able to search complaints, um, just basic information that we can't do now in a very easy manner. Everything will be sent to the state then through libraries and nibers so we're compliant for grants and things such as that. The evidence room, uh, I am doing the evidence in Fostoria right now, so I'm gonna do it hand in hand with this. Um, I got a new records retention policy, which Chief Stevens provided to me. So, that'll give us kind of a guideline to go by with our records and evidence, when it can be disposed of and when whatnot. Uh, I figure probably about ninety percent of the stuff that's in that evidence room can be gotten rid of. A lot of the stuff, the Attorney General's office is asking for any rape kits and things such as that, or unsolved crimes, could be sent to them now. Um, they got a big thing going where they're trying to solve all these kinda cold cases. So, we'll be sending, going through those and sending the ones that can be sent to the state to them for, to look at those. Have received some resumes, um, and I've been doing background checks. We'll be having interviews, hopefully, but either by the end of this week or next week. We've got three or four so far, so far, excuse me, um, to go by. Not what I wanted, but it's a start. We have to get some sort of manpower. Right now, it's only me and Sergeant Broches, so it's been hard to fill hours that, that I feel need to be filled. But I have been in touch with the sheriff's office and a lot of the deputies that I'm friends with and OSP who have been trying to make maybe more passes than they normally do through the village during our times of need. So, they've been more than willing to help us out and do what they can. But hopefully, we're gonna get these positions filled and get people out there so we have, we have the protection we need. Again, Sergeant Broches has been very helpful in adjusting her schedule, especially on short, short notice, to work some of these night shifts and things to kinda keep, keep, uh, the coverage up. So, I can't say enough that she's been helpful in getting myself acclimated and things going here by the village.
Good.
You guys have any questions for me?
Just get her done.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do. We're working. Um, there were three citations for the month of, month of March, five warnings. Um, we did handle one juvenile complaint, which I handled with a young juvenile, which was kinda neat. Doing, it's a little, it's a different beast over here than it is in Fostoria, I will say that. So, it was kinda nice to, you know, be able to do, do it in a different manner than kinda what I have to do over there. So, I did enjoy that. Other than that, things have been nice and quiet, and hopefully we'll get the ball rolling and get things under control around here. You guys have any questions? Get ahold of me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Fire, Steve?
I had ten calls for the month of March. Yearly total is twenty-nine calls. And the department would like to thank the village for the use of the old cop cars for fire class. The department is starting the thirty-six hour volunteer FF class this Saturday, followed by the FF two transition class in late May, June. And then also, I had talked to Jim, and I guess this was discussed maybe a year, year and a half ago, a reflective sign on the post for your house numbers. Do you know where that has went or, you know? And the reason I'm bringing it up, I was actually at one of these and, uh, when the signs facing parallel with the road, you cannot see it. When they're out there perpendicular, where they can reflect, I mean, seconds count, so. I know the township, they had given the signs. I talked to John briefly about it, so I don't know if we wanna open this back up or not.
You talking about in, in town?
In town, with your house numbers. It'd be nice if they at least have a house's number.
Yeah.
Period. There's a lot of, well, a big percentage of the town, uh, numbers on their houses. This was still dark that morning and you couldn't read the, there was a reflective sign. You couldn't read it because the lights aren't shining, and the house numbers are there. You still can't read the house numbers. In the daylight, you don't notice that. So, it's kind of a hands-on thing and kinda opens your eyes up.
But these would be put out in front of the house or on your house or?
I would say closest to the road as possible.
Kinda like what you do at the townships.
Yes. I guess it was discussed at one time.
I don't know how much that would cost to implement, so I guess that's one thing that I figured out.
I went and put them on that. I, I seen that and it's like, you know, there is a, just a, the visual aid there, so.
What's your house number? Got any jumbles like that?
I, I got spear of numbers.
Oh, good, okay.
It would be that expensive with it, I wouldn't think.
It would have to be probably looked into whatever, wherever you could.
I mean, it's, you know, it would cost less than, say, fifty bucks for the numbers. I don't think that would be cost prohibitive to people.
Oh, if they'd be a lot less than that, probably.
No, I think it's a good idea.
But how do you enforce that?
Uh, you would have an ordinance indicating exactly what you want and how it should be done. If you want it uniform, you can have them provided through village offices. Be considerate of old folks who may have a hard time getting out.
Joyce.
Who have a hard time getting out.
Are there any other villages that do that? I've not seen them in even cities or villages that I know of.
Attica had talked about it for the same reason because...
It's not a bad idea.
Because of the emergency situations, and they had a terrible time where they couldn't find somebody who was in dire need for about ten minutes, just for the simple fact the numbers on hold. That's in Limbo. Limbo does exist right now. But it, it is a common problem that I think firefighters especially face and, and...
And around drivers. Maybe we gotta, we gotta put an notice out or something to the public or something first and say this is what we're thinking about doing and whatever doing it or something, and then...
Just make sure that you don't require, that they get geared up and do something and all of a sudden you require them to do something else.
Right, I mean, but I'm just saying so that we understand what, what process is or something. I mean, I just think should, I don't think we should just...
Implement it and say you're...
Information's everybody gotta do and that'd piss everybody off, right? You just say, or maybe at least let them know what we're thinking about doing this and this is why. Maybe have the fire department or something.
If you say break them up with proposed ordinance for three readings? And, you know, those can be, and so, you know, it's one meeting a month. You won't see a proposed ordinance from me for a month. You guys, you know, tinker with it, which is your job.
Right.
When does the fire department do their open house?
It's in the fall, isn't it? It's in the fall, John.
But I, I would need more direction as to exactly what you all are looking for.
Yeah.
And the specifics. You may wanna ask the, you know, the firemen may have an idea.
Yeah, I think we ought to get with them and...
Get your buy-in on what they probably want and what they want.
What they think and what would work best for them and, and we can kinda tweak it around.
Yeah, we just gotta look at it as a cost-effective way to do it so we don't, you know, it's real expensive for everybody to get a sign made or something, you know, and you're probably gonna do. Cause you could get it costly if you don't watch how we do it.
I wanted to ask too, does our fire department give out smoke detectors like the bigger cities do?
I'm not sure if they do or not. I wondered about them myself.
If, if people request them either.
Yeah, that's why I wondered. I didn't know if they had, you know, if they had one either.
Like a lopper or something.
Yeah, yeah.
To find that out.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure they do though.
I know they give them away at their open house, you know, in a drawing, but I don't know if they have them. Just if somebody calls and says I need one.
I just noticed like Fostoria, they, they give them away for free. I don't know.
Well, most of the big places do, yeah.
Is it like for low-income people or is it for everybody?
Not necessarily.
I didn't know how that works.
Kinda as-need basis, a few requests and they, they have them there, so. But it's, I think that's sort of like a grant situation that I'm sure, I'm sure it's long dried up since then, so.
Really?
I know they still have some left, but I imagine that those have since dried up.
I wonder on those signs if it might make sense to make a bulk purchase, get a lower cost and let people from the, from the village. And that might avoid some people using green, some people using blue. I've seen both colors. If you wanna make it uniform, say buy them from the village, get the lower cost, and then everybody's got the same size, the same color.
Right.
Might help.
It might be a grant or something like that happen too. Be safety type thing, that some people check into.
Well, maybe I can look into it, pass fire laws or something.
Give some feedback.
I think for them, what they, what their needs really are, how they would like to do it. And then we could get with Rick together or some kind of proposal and they could, like I said, tweak it and make it work, so.
I think that's it.
I read it.
Wife says, somebody left a message for you.
Shit, God's on my...
Overslept, baby.
No, we're, we got some medical issues on our house.
My wife and I will discuss them.
Yeah, I apologize.
So, Dr. Just a little bit off his paycheck.
Dollar forty.
Dollar forty, okay.
Do we need a swag?
Need a pen, I guess.
Okay, clean up, Joyce?
Okay, I don't have anything right now, but I've got my eye on several places in town now that spring is here, okay?
Spring is strong there.
Yeah, so by next meeting, we should have some answers. And I think this year, we are going to maybe enforce it a little bit better, you know? So, get ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, Waters Sewer Street, John?
Uh, street, we've been filling some pipe holes and whatnot. Sewer, uh, we're transferring sides now so we can get the other train fixed. Get the new pumps put in.
So, do you got help to get that done, or I mean, you're...
Transfer?
Well, what do we gotta do? I mean, you can't do that all by yourself. I mean, you got enough help to get that done, or?
Well, the company will come in and get some. Get that cleaned out.
That's a cool job.
It's interesting. Water, I gave Klaus a PO number to get the VFDs ordered for the well house. And, uh... Well, we'll talk about Scott, I'll be running up there shortly.
Number three.
What was that question right now?
The tower. After Scott gets to bring up this thing, we'll probably get contact, uh, a few companies. And get the, um, for estimates on the tower. There will be a couple of them out there.
When, when was that done last?
Right after I first started.
Really? But didn't that long?
I was, I started in '02. Aiden and I did it, so, cause we had to drain the tower. I was, I started in 'oh two, Aidan and I did it, so, his man did during the tower.
Yep.
If you want to think about it, you might want to look, see if you can find the information on the pump curve on that, on those well pumps, so they can set up the ramp speed and profile.
I already gave you all that information, Klaus.
Because it's important that you, you do a soft ramp, and that's so you don't have that water hammer, so it's always probably...
Right, right, right.
I wanted to ask a question too, on, uh, the park road. All right, you're responsible for the basic, right?
To write her the signs.
Okay, now, from, from there on down, you know, those trucks are just chewing that road up terribly.
Talk to your neighbor across the street from your other fortress.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've already, I've already said a few things, don't think so.
I can't imagine that.
But I mean, they're really, and he's just got an awful, awful amount of trucks going back and forth, so he must be doing terrific just...
Which is good for him.
Well, yeah, it's good for him, but it's...
Because Elm Street's gonna end up, you have a union.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think they're loaded very often though.
No.
Because they bounce down when they go over the tracks.
But the one, the one side especially is really coming up. Okay.
So do you have any timing for the state then on the, on the street here on twelve, is it, when is that supposed to start?
They just said sometime this summer, I think.
Because I know they're getting ready to start the bridge out here on twelve, so we already should, should have to roll down.
I know they're getting ready to start that, because they called me and asked if they could park their vehicles here at night, so, they're probably state vehicles, so. I think just one, I think just the...
But as far as right now, we're, we're, we gotta leave all our, ducking our role as far as all the, all illegal things that we had to do.
There was just, just the former Elm Street was the issue.
Okay, so we just gotta get the sign up.
We just changed the name and now it's ours.
Yeah. Yeah, that's on tape. And really, that wouldn't have had anything to do with it. It would, but it wouldn't, because everything in the process here, he can't accessable sidewalks. That street wouldn't have had it because it was still labeled as a, you know, private, but, but that's all.
We talked around, we had to map this, this park street and...
I understand, I already know there's nothing else we had, other, other issues besides that, that maybe shorted or something, so.
It was just that, and we were in trouble for the culvert, that street in particular was a big issue. Should be good.
So you got any timing for that, then, as far as the culvert replacement or any, the, uh, culvert replacement, any timing on any of that stuff?
I talked to Jill today, she's gonna give me more information. We got a regional planning meeting tomorrow, and if that's all, maybe she'll have to spend a few months.
The state normally doesn't, they always, so, you know, end up April or anything else, so.
Which we should, hopefully, we'll, we'll get this one.
Uh, well, we call it, for the Dallas. Just, yeah, yeah, we won't know until...
Okay, park, April?
Uh, little league, James Timmel and Adam Shindore, because our coaches for that, just for Coach Pitch, that's all we had, um, this year, and they are set, um, there's a meeting this Saturday in McCutcheonville, and they're gonna set the schedules and stuff there, so James said he was gonna go to that, I'm not sure Adam's on to that one or not, but I know there'll be, I think, fees that might be due with that, so we'll be turning those in, then as soon as that meeting's over, we probably know a little better. Um, Mr. Les from the stool, he started to put his P.O.s in for the grant, um, that he's getting stuff, start doing whatever he's gonna do out there, he gave us like a workup of that, yeah.
Where are we putting?
He's talked to Brittany, him and Brittany have been in discussion about where Brittany wants stuff and what's...
It's not Brittany wants to go, it's what Kelsey wants.
Okay, well, not so much. Okay, well, he's been in discussion with Brittany, so if we have any questions, Brittany can address those this Sunday at our meeting bed, where he's gonna, what he's ordering, I know he was looking at trash cans, recycled trash cans was the first thing he was gonna purchase, like, what he was looking at, something, I know he was in contact with her, what kind she wanted, so we could get something maybe a little fancier out there instead of the, you know, I mean, the barrels work, definitely, but maybe something to kind of spruce it up a little bit more. Uh, the picnic tables, um, we have that thirteen ninety-two that we raised, and I would like to get permission on, um, how many picnic tables I can order, because I would like to get those ordered for, um, the year, Lowe's, cause I'm like every other week wondering what the status of this is. Um, what it was is that we can get them eighty dollars assembled and delivered, and then we're gonna stain them then afterwards, and then we were gonna, um, look at, I think I asked you guys once before, three kid, like little picnic tables that we could like put on the beach or around there for the kids, and those were twenty dollars, from a gentleman named, named Mike Albert from Tiffin. So I was kind of thinking, you know, maybe we could, you know, do around, um, you know, maybe twelve picnic tables or something that might give us enough money for stain then to purchase, to stain those tables, and then the other picnic tables that are out there, um, we wanted to power wash those and then stain those as well instead of painting them, just so they'll look nicer then. And then still look into doing, um, I didn't want to, you know how we talked about doing the donate in memory of other picnic tables, I didn't want to announce anything for that yet, until I knew how many picnic tables I was allowed to purchase, and then I would know how many people, you know, could sponsor a table then, so that's something maybe you guys could discuss tonight, yeah, I'll put you on short.
And then how many, did, uh, Davidson give us the commitment on, right?
He has not yet, he has been approved with, um...
The Eagle Scout project that he's taking on and give us to build picnic tables for the park.
Yeah, I had him, I had a letter from him, um, saying that he was approved, and everything was a go with that, and, um, James, I might, I'm gonna show my emails for him, but he said that, yeah, he said he got his project approved, and he's working on raising money at this point, but he didn't tell me, I think how many he's gonna make is just kind of how much money he raises, and I can go from there, I'm hoping maybe three, you know, so. Steve's got three at his house, they said he'll be able to do, um, let's say we do the twelve, you know, we can order twelve, and then, you know, say Hunter gives us another three, that's a start for what we might need to make some of them a little safer this year then, so I was kind of looking at approval from you guys on that.
Who's your Eagle scout?
Um, Hunter Davidson.
Cause he, at one time was gonna shoot for six, he said he was gonna try to shoot for six.
And I think he was gonna have help with some of the other scouts and his group to earn their badges, not their badge. Our spring cleanup, we are looking at, um, we have to get that scheduled at some point soon, um, but my question is again to you guys, or questions to you guys, um, how much are we allowed to use for the park money towards cleanup? Because we really need mulch out there, I mean, a lot of the swing sets and stuff, like they're fairly skimmed in with the mulch that's there, um, I know we don't have a lot of money to work with, um, I know, um, Brittany wanted some fill dirt, I had got, John said he had some, but some of it was rocky, there was some other cleaner dirt that we could get for like ten dollars for like a big dump, tra- truck or trailer, whatever they said we could come in for like ten dollars. You know, and then other stuff that we're just looking at, you know, it's just minor stuff, and I'm still looking at getting a grant for this stuff, but that can take a little bit, and at this point, we're planning, you know, fishing days in May, fifth or third, and then we've got the car show set as well for the twenty-fourth, as May had been in contact with Cam and Dan Morschon, and she's starting to get the ball rolling on that as well, so it'd be nice to have all this stuff looking nice for the park when people start coming in. I want to get some of the old stumps we even got there, but I think that I can get those done for free, so, I've got a couple people, and I think we'll just go out there and, you know, those, so they're gonna...
Use your charm. I know he can talk for anyone, but...
Yeah, gotta, you know, but, um, but then at the same time, I know that John and Steve have been working on the drinking fountains, and we've got the room.
I had it like this, everywhere.
Okay, anybody got anything on their old business to bring up? Okay, on the new business? We need to approve the magistrate report.
Oh, Don Road.
It'll be like Scott now.
Sorry.
He got your mother all.
Running the family, running the family.
So we'll need a motion to approve magistrate.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Stan?